For all this meeting to order, let me recognize that all members of the council are present, that the city administrator is present, and that the record is being kept by the city clerk. Would all please join the council in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next up is public comment. Mr. Harkin, if you want to step forward, state your name and address for the record.
I'm John Harkins for Christopher Terrace, Saco. I'm just here to inquire about the progress on the hiring of a new city administrator and if the councils had an opportunity to review the applicants to date.
No comments.
Okay. Will the new candidates meet the requirements of municipal executive experience?
When there's an announcement, you'll know who it is and what their experience is.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is administrative updates.
Last week, the council received a packet from some residents down in Ward Four related to the 60 Bayview Road. I've done some research. I've reviewed the claims and the questions made by the members of the public with staff. This project has grown somewhat contentious over time and is a matter for the planning board, but now that it came to council and shared as part of public record, I'd like to address the council and general public in explaining this project and the actions that have been necessary for staff. There are many pieces of misinformation that are being represented in this letter, which I've not dedicated the time to respond to, as nearly all of them have been answered in follow-ups between staff and residents over the course of almost a year, and many of the answers can be found in the documents provided by the party. The site had been a lawful nonconforming use for decades. The site had nearly a dozen old cottages that were both no longer permitted use post-zoning enactment and which buildings were also built within traditional setbacks. They were not only nonconforming uses, but were nonconforming structures as well. The developer proposed to maintain a nonconforming use, seasonal cottages, on-site, but to both reduce the number of buildings and eliminate all of the nonconforming structures. As an aside, zoning favors a reduction in nonconformity. So, this project would be seen favorably by the court since it eliminates all the existing nonconforming structures. It did this by replacing buildings that were within setbacks and citing an additional proposed -- and citing an initially proposed eight, now six revamped cottages to place on-site where all setbacks can be met. Courts will view that very favorably as a total elimination of nonconformancy as to the structures. The heart of the dispute and concerns relate -- and concern relates more to the nonconforming use versus the nonconforming structures. As you may know, zoning opposes any expansion of nonconformity. The neighbors view the project as expanding nonconformity as to use. The city team has worked quite carefully to make sure the nonconforming use is not expanded. So, for example, the city saw in the initial plan that the dozen or so rental units were to be reduced to eight cottages. So, less intensity of use. The pushback is that initially the developer increased the living area of these units beyond what had been previously on-site, arguably an increase in nonconformity. So, that led to a reduction from six down to -- or from eight down to six, and so that the living area remained the same as or lesser than what was currently on-site or had been on-site. So, I think the city team is comfortable now that the area of nonconforming use has not been expanded via the actual buildings themselves. So, the other expanse -- expansion of use is the fear of not-yet-reality that what were once seasonal cottages will become a virtual -- or by virtue of modern construction standards, full year-round homes and uses, not snowboard cottages -- snowbird cottages as designed. What rightly concerns the neighbors is that the old cottages were their construction and character self-policing. By that, I mean, as they were uninsulated, unheated, old-style cottages, they really could not be occupied into the winter. So, these new buildings will have basements and second-floor decorative and heating plants. So, the logical fear is that even if there are only six units, those units will become full year-round homes as self-policing limitations inherent in the condition and construction of the old cottages has been removed and new buildings capable of year-round use are being offered. So, to combat this possibility, the city team insisted upon very strong deed covenants prohibiting year-round use and requiring that all units be disconnected from water on or before 1031 each year and to not reconnect until 5-1. The city planner has confirmed with Main Water that this can be effectively accomplished and enforced. So, the city attorney has been involved with this project since it first arrived in code enforcement as it was necessary to seek out legal advice as to the interplay between nonconforming structures and nonconforming use. By Attorney Murphy's account, Mr. Lambert has fairly and appropriately applied the rules as he and I both understand them. Subsequently, Emily Cole Prescott has been involved in assisting the planning board to review the project. She, as well, has fairly applied the rules and standards in reviewing the application and in assisting the planning board. I am entirely confident this project has been treated and reviewed in the same manner and fashion as other projects that have come before the city. That's it.
That's it.
That's a lot, but that's it.
Thank you very much. Any questions of the city administrator on his comments? Councilor Copeland.
What about the -- it's been noted that there's been debris there, and he's been given a written warning for 30 days. That was months ago. What about follow-up in that
Again, I mentioned I was not going to respond to every one of the accusations that were made. I believe that code enforcer Lambert has done everything that he is responsible for doing. If the challenges are...
His letter says he had 30 days, and he didn't comply.
From my conversation with the code enforcer, he has complied with our requirements under our code.
There's still trash there. Yeah, I think that that deserves the follow-up.
Okay.
Then the other thing is about -- what about the fact that he demolished all the buildings before he had site plan approval?
Those -- again, those are -- he's legally allowed to take the buildings down. It starts a timeline in which he has to have some site plan re -- demolition -- a demolition permit is something that he can go for, which he did. He got permission to take the buildings down. He has every right to do that. You don't have to do that to get site planned. The problem is now there's a timeline in which he has to get site plan approval to build anything else.
Didn't Attorney Murphy's letter state that once he -- the buildings were removed, things changed in terms of prior use? Is that the timing you're talking about?
The time -- yes, that sets a timeline. He has one year to comply with site -- getting his approval through the planning board in order to move the project as still nonconforming or grandfathered in.
And so, how do we get basements involved in this? You know, there's all that discussion about the lighting on the outside and closeness to the...
Those are all concerns that the planning board needs to address, not the city council.
Well, you're addressing it, so I'm addressing you on it.
And yes, I know. I don't have any -- I can't answer those questions. That's -- those are questions that the planning board has to...
They're questions for the planning board.
Right. And what about the fact that the residents have brought these issues up to the planning board? Doesn't that have any weight?
The planning board has -- gets to make those decisions, not myself or the council.
I'm sure it has weight with the...
I was trying to address the --
It doesn't seem to.
I was trying to address the complaints about staff, because that is my purview, how the legal ramifications of...
Emily's doing a great job. I...
And so has Mr. Lambert. They have both followed -- they have followed every ordinance that they are responsible for.
I question that debris cleanup one.
Okay. Noted.
Thank you.
All right. Next is council discussion and comment. Any comments or discussion to my right? Seeing none to my left, Councilor Copeland.
I would like to applaud the city clerk and her team of many who pulled off a terrific election, and thank you very much.
Any other comments to my left? Seeing none. Next up is going into executive session. I don't believe that we're going in under A. I believe it's D, particularly examination of a contract. So, if I could have a motion referencing D subsection -- I'm sorry, yeah, subsection 6D, contract negotiation. Do I have a -- do I have a motion to my right to go into executive session?
I'll make it.
Okay.
Be it ordered to City Council and erred into executive session pursuant to MRSA Title 1's Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405, 6D, contract negotiation.
Do I have a second on this motion?
Second.
So, I have a motion by Councilor Minton and seconded by Councilor Gay to go into executive session. Any comments to my right? Seeing none. Comments to my left? Thank you. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Minton?
Yes.
Councilor Smart?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
The motion passes 6-0 -- I'm sorry, 7-0. We are now in executive session, and we'll... -- Any comments to my left? Seeing none. Councilor Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
No.
Councilor Copeland?
No.
Councilor Copeland, I'm sorry, Councilor Mentorn?
No.
Councilor Smart?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
The motion passes 4-3. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No move.
I have a motion by Councilor Mentorn, seconded by Councilor Smart to adjourn. Any, so Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Councilor Smart?
Yes.
Councilor Mentorn?
Yes.
Councilor Copeland?
Yes.
Councilor Doyle?
Yes.
Councilor Gay?
Yes.
And Councilor Archer?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn passes 7-0. We are now in the, I'd like to call the workshop to order.